Oh, yep, yep, got the red dot, always a bonus.
Right, Nick, are you aware of any other people that we're waiting to have join?
I'm not too sure. Andrew Finch, sorry. Is Stefan or anyone else from your team attending, do you know?
Not that I'm aware of. I think you just have to put up with me, although James is covering for Stefan as well and notice he's online.
Sorry, Nick, I was just gonna say Louise Brown from Graytown Community Board accepted, but she's not in the room as yet. But I think everybody else that has accepted is in the room.
Is there a friend from Fishing Game? Oh, sorry, Amy. Oh, good.
Okay, we might begin Kyorakoto, everyone. Welcome to tonight's CLG for the Wellington Water and South Water District Council. Really great to see all sorts of new faces here since the last CLG, which is excellent because this is a community liaison group and we've had a couple of dry runs without having community here. And I know it's always a really important issue. And thank you. Aaron, Greater Regional Council, we've got South Water Upper District Council reps here, is that correct? I can't see, I've only got names on screen. I can see Andrew Finch.
Correct, yep.
Andy and James O'Connor as well.
Right, and Stefan Corbett. We might go around the room, quick introduction. It'll just confirm who is on the call, very brief introduction of yourself, your role, and the organisation that you're with. So starting with me, Andrew Freeman, I'm the facilitator. I'll go to, and I'll call around, we'll go to Adam next, just the scream as I can see them. Adam Mattson.
Kyorakoto. I'm the program delivery lead for South Water Dapa. So overseeing the capital projects that we've got, that we're delivering, including the treatment plants.
Thank you. Was that clear? It broke up my end or am I the one with the bad signal?
Come through, I cut my end, Andrew.
Okay, great. Thank you to Nick.
Yeah, Kyora, Nick Kyorakoto, I'm head of network performance. My role is responsible for operational consent compliance.
Kyora, and to you, Andrew Finch.
Kyora, Andrew Finch, I'm principal advisor of Three Waters, covering for Robin Wells for a undefined period of time while she works on better and greater things to do with local water done well.
Thank you. And Mel Maynard.
Kyorakoto, kato. I'm Mel Maynard, I'm with the Martinborough Community Board. Yeah, this is my second triennium on the CLG, but it's the first time I think I've been able to make it here. I missed the last meeting, so I do apologise for that, but it's good to see everyone.
Kyora, Aaron Johnston.
Hello, everyone. My name's Aaron Johnston. Obviously, I'm the compliance officer for Graytown and Martinborough Waste Water Treatment Plant, working for Greater Wellington Regional Council.
Kyora, thank you. James O'Connor.
Hi, Kyora, James O'Connor, I'm acting GM Infrastructure and Community Operations this week whilst Stefan's away. Otherwise, I'm his direct report under manager of community operations at South Water Dapa.
Thank you. Amy Smith.
Hi, I'm a senior engineer at Wellington Water, working on the wastewater treatment plants.
Thank you. And Amy Cullen.
Not bad. It's Coghlan, but I'll forgive it.
My apologies.
Wellington Fishing Game Resource Management Officer, so obviously mostly deal with resource management issues that come through for fishing games, interest in science as well.
Thank you. And Robin Bramston.
Kyora, I'm the advisor community governance, I'm Amy's backup, so I'm just here to learn how it all goes. So that if Amy needs me to do it one time and she can't, then that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Jeff Rose.
Jeff Rose, head of treatment operations for Wellington Water.
Thank you. Rory Mullen.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, I'm the senior communications and engagement advisor for Wellington Water. So work across all communications, looking after South Water Upper District Council and community engagement as well. Yeah.
Thank you. And I think I see Louise Brown on the list, but I can't see Louise.
I'm here. Kyora, I'm Louise Brown, I'm the chair of the Graytown Community Board.
Excellent. Thanks, Louise. Anyone else missing who perhaps not on my screen? Great, I think that's everyone. So everyone's had a chance to introduce themselves. Excellent. Thank you. Might move to you, Nick, to begin the meeting with the karakia.
Yep, ours.
Kyora, thank you. And back to you as well, Nick, just following on from the, so we had a CLG for this group in March this year. It was kind of a dry run because it was, I guess, the people that were already consulting anyway. It was South Water Upper District Council, Wellington Water and Regional Council. But just for completeness, Nick, was there any action points from that meeting that you wanted to highlight at the start of this meeting, or alternatively, perhaps ones where the current meeting agenda will cover anyway?
There was very little in the way of outstanding items, Andrew. The, I guess, the thing that came out of it was just continual updates on where we're at with the good work that Adam's been doing in the CapEx stuff and also just updates on some of the issues at Martinborough that Amy had raised and responded to at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that was there, any actions or matters arising that they feel should be raised at the start of this meeting before we begin? Okay, thank you. Just a very brief summary, just for those that haven't been attending the CLGs and are new here, of the kind of purpose and expectations of the community liaison groups. So they're very much intended to enhance engagement. They're a really important, I guess, avenue for Wellington Water to update in a public but constructive forum with South Water Upper District Council, Greater Regional Council and members of the community, particularly community reps. And for the purpose, in my understanding, to make sure that people have either the facts that are important to inform discussion or ability to ask for the information that they need and to clarify any assumptions that might be out there in the public or in relation to ongoing or upcoming work. And I know this, this topic is always in and out of the media and it's certainly an area where plenty of misunderstandings or assumptions can be made. And it's probably, this is just a really constructive place to inform the conversation. But really important too, that the other avenues of, I suppose, debate or even policy setting still remain. So this by no means replaces or asserts the South Water Upper District Council in terms of budgets and things they approve. And even, I guess, the ongoing process between the Regional Council and Wellington Water and South Water Upper District Council. So it is therefore engagement and it's, can be really effective provided people engage with that spirit. And probably often an area where commitments to follow up with information and offline discussions are a really helpful add-on. In terms of simple roles online here, it's a community meeting, it has been recorded. It will be available as with previous ones on the South Water Upper District Council website with a YouTube recording. So everyone, I guess, be aware of that, be constructive, but by all means, ask hard questions. Just ask them with respect and an expectation of clear answers or where you will get those answers. Please don't interrupt speakers when they're talking. I guess Zoom and Teams doesn't really let that happen anyway, but just one speaker at a time. There will be opportunities for questions. Those are built into the agenda. And perhaps depending on the topic, there may be room for it as we go. But given it's an online meeting, it's often helpful to move through the material, make notes of key things. And if there's a slide that you really need to refer to, ask Amy or someone to go back to that slide so that you've got the information there with your question. But beyond that, yeah, I think just everyone engage with, with respect and and a goal to support Wellington Water and South Water Upper District Council to do the best job they can here. We'll move now to a summary of the consent compliance of the last 12 months. Actually, before that, Amy Smith was there. Are there member questions that came into you that you wanted to address first? Let's see, that was on the agenda.
I think it's a question for Amy Anderson, but I don't have access to any questions. Were you aware of any, Nick?
Oh, sorry, I was muted. No, no, none that I'm aware of. And then conversations with Amy Anderson today, none came up.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, plenty of opportunities for questions as we proceed. But we might move to you, Amy, with the summary of consent compliance for the last 12 months. And you've got a bunch of slides there to share, I understand.
Do you mind, do you have the slides, Andrew, or?
Not as a PowerPoint, only as a PDF.
Okay. Give me a sec. Can't see you guys once I press present, so you'll just have to, I'll just, can you, what can you, sorry.
Things go slideshow and then view under there, that should expand it out, shouldn't it?
Yeah, 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 that's.
All right, yeah.
Okay, so this is our presentation on the.
And Amy's? Amy, sorry. And I'll just monitor the chat. If people have a question they'd really like to raise as you're speaking, I'll keep an eye on that. I'll also keep an eye out, I guess, if someone wants to raise a hand.
Yes.
You know, virtually with the little icon, you could do that too. Okay, thanks, Amy.
So my first slide is about compliance, where you're completing the draft annual compliance reports for the 2023, well, July 2023 to June 2024 compliance period. The draft reports indicate that the treatment plants, Graytown and Martinborough, will be non-compliant with their resource consent. But the full reports will be completed in due course and published. And then that will be the formal report due at the end of September. And I guess the note there is that the non-compliances, you know, we've discussed these at previous CLGs, the work required via the upgrade projects is designed to address these, these types of non-compliances that we're seeing and other work programmes underway, which I'll discuss on the next slide, which is the growth aspect. Wellington Water is completing an ongoing investigation into a discrepancy between inflow and outflow measurement at the Graytown Wastewater Treatment Plant. And once that investigation is complete, we'll provide an update on the outcomes of that. And a success story is that in Graytown, over the 2023-24 irrigation season, was very successful with over 73,500 cubic metres of treated effluent discharged to the adjacent land block. This is the significant, the most significant operational achievement that we've, yeah, we've never achieved, we've never been able to operate the land irrigation so successfully as we have this summer. And it meets the intention of this Stage 1B, which is where we're operating it at the moment for the consent. It meets the intention of that resource consent application that was made back in 2016. So it was a really good operational improvement that the operators made, supported by the leaseholders and also, you know, operations, the engineers from Wellington Water. So we're happy with that. Does anyone have any questions about that? Cool. Then, oh, sorry.
No, yeah, no questions shown on the chat either.
And so then you've probably read in the news, maybe, that both Martinborough and Graytown Wastewater Treatment Plants are operating beyond their design treatment capacity as a result of the number of people connected to each of those treatment plants now. We have advised South Water Dapa to pause new connections at Martinborough, that was in 2023, and also at Graytown during July this year. We have commenced a study to determine what treatment upgrades can be implemented at the plant to enable additional treatment capacity for that, for growth. This study will be completed in early 2025 and that will give South Water Dapa information to decide what level of growth they wish to enable in those two treatment plant catchments. And but these capacity upgrades that we're looking at must be considered within the conditions and intention of the existing resource consents. And now.
Andrew, we've got a question.
Yeah, got a raised hand, sorry, I can't see who that's from.
It's not showing on my screen. Sorry, that's me. I just wondered, Amy, about the desludgeing, which was, which was going to be being done over summer. Just been at the Martinborough Wastewater Treatment Plant. Can I just ask what happened with that or what's?
Yeah, sure. Adam is going to speak about the capital work projects that are happening at the treatment plants in the next few slides, which is where he will cover off desludgeing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mel. Any other questions there for Amy at this point?
I did have a question. Amy, what do you anticipate, you know, potential treatment capacity being increased by? Difficult question, I know.
I guess that's actually defined by South Water Dapa and the growth that they wish to enable. There's obviously growth studies that have been published on what population projections are in the catchments. But ultimately, we're looking at different scenarios, but it's a question of what South Water Dapa wishes to enable, what growth amount they want to enable at the treatment plants. Does that answer your question, Aaron?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a very difficult answer, so.
I think, I think, Aaron, it's a bit of a journey, which is linking the spatial planning, the combined district plan and the master planning process into the infrastructure strategy that will inform the long-term plan. So as Amy said, it's not a black and white answer. It's about understanding drivers and the response to those drivers and moving, and moving South Water Upper from dealing with compliance issues into dealing with growth or managing growth and providing for growth.
Yeah, I think it's probably a really clear distinction that needs to be made is that the work that Adam is going to talk about next is about compliance upgrades, health and safety upgrades, delivering to the stage 2A of the resource consent. And then we, you know, we need to make a decision, South Water Dapa needs to make an informed decision about what growth looks like at these treatment plants. So it is separate, two separate pieces of work. Obviously linked.
Thanks. Thank you.
Right. I can keep sharing the slides if you want Adam to tell me when to move on to the next ones.
Yeah, that would be good. Thank you. Thank you, Amy. So.
Any other questions for Amy?
Cool. More questions.
There more? No. Might be, there's a, there'll be a chance at the end as well, ask for the questions as well. People want. So just a bit of an update on the two compliance upgrade projects that we've got. And it is useful to try and keep it in the context of these two projects to deliver the stage 2A of the compliance upgrades for the two plants. And at this stage, they aren't looking to do any growth aspects. You know, that's going to be part of and driven out of those growth studies that Amy just touched on before. But the key focus for these two compliance projects is in addressing the abatement notice that we have, notices that we had at Martinborough. So the way that the project has sort of focused on doing the work at both of these plants, we've got what was sort of broken into two parts. We've got the short-term works we're looking to deliver around the immediate compliance needs. And then we've also got the longer-term upgrades, or probably more like medium term these days, upgrades for the stage 2 land irrigation. So just touching on with the Martinborough abatement notice, so we had the three that were working towards, they were issued August, August last year. One around the desludgeing of the ponds, one to do with an inflow quality monitoring and one around investigating the UV. So the latest work that the team have been working to, we have closing out the conditions, the activities for the inflow monitoring work as well as the UV work. And then working at the moment through to do the desludgeing work this financial year. So, and we've been working closely with Aaron and providing him regular updates to address those notices. So next slide, please, Amy. So in terms of some of the work we've been doing lately in the desalaging space, so back in March, we completed and updated sludge surveys and we did that for both Graytown and Martinborough. And we've submitted an updated programme through to to Regional Council with the idea of getting the desludgeing work completed in April. And that would be for Martinborough. And then the goal at this stage is then to immediately follow with Graytown. Part of the work that we've done is around assessing what's appropriate for the desludgeing work is around a design report that's now been completed. That includes some of the results from the surveying work that we did and requirements around the tube bag laydown area that will need to be constructed prior to doing the actual desludgeing work. We are working towards releasing a tender to open market this month. So the paperwork on that's just being finalised, going through its final approvals, aiming to get that out this month. And then shortly following, awarding a contract and as soon as they are available, commencing, commencing work. So we've got the funding confirmed from South Water Dapa, so it's a matter of getting the tender out, getting the contract dismissions in and awarding a contract and going forward. So we are looking at this stage to, yeah, the actual desludgeing work. So prior to Christmas, at this stage, the programme's got physical works commencing for the laydown areas. And then we've got a close down period over those, over the Christmas and New Year's. And then in the new year, the plan is to then undertake the desludgeing activity. And as mentioned before, Graytown to follow at this stage, sort of April, May, the back end of the financial year. Obviously, all of this is a little bit dependent on contract availability and we'll work through that as with the tender submissions that we receive. Any quick questions around desludgeing before we move on to those other two notices?
Hey, Adam, I thought it might be worth just talking about the, you know, the, how we talk about the difference between desludgeing in terms of its role, in terms of sort of operational maintenance, performance kind of thing versus growth?
Yep.
Yeah, so we're talking about that.
Look, I'm not a desludgeing expert and Amy will jump in when she feels comfortable. But the work we're doing here, I think it's been acknowledged a few times that these ponds have never been deslodged. So the projects have picked us up to do this work now. And, you know, part of, once we've completed this work going forward, it will be a schedule, like a scheduled maintenance item. But yeah, I guess as Amy touched on before, the plants are already operating above their design capacity. And by desludgeing the ponds, it brings them back into align with their design capacity. You want to add anything to that, Amy? That's. Oh, sorry, you're on mute. Yeah.
Not yet. So it's not, in itself, it's not a direct sort of solution to the growth issue, is it? So this is separate, sort of more of an operational maintenance kind of best practice thing, isn't it?
Yeah. So it is, it enables these ponds to operate compliantly and reliably within their design loading capacity. It is not a mechanism for enabling treatment capacity for growth.
Yeah, yeah. Great, thank you.
And I think I saw Mel's hand up go up first.
Yeah, there's a Mel and then Louise. Thank you, Mel.
So, sorry, I think you've just answered my question just now in the conversation that you were just having about the maintenance and the difference between the desludgeing. And it is a capacity issue that, I guess, we're focused on because we can't do any future connections until the capacity issue and design is completed. So, yeah.
Yeah. Yep. Thanks. Thanks, Mel.
No worries.
Yes, so my question, I think, goes a little bit further than what our answer is. So once the desludgeing is done, is our current capacity able to meet the current needs that we have? Because I know we've put whole, or will it give us a little bit of an opportunity for capacity to allow some connections? Because we talked about in the earlier slide about up to those that had the resource consent. So there obviously are some individuals that have passed the resource consent point but can't connect as opposed to new people, which is kind of, I know we're talking about capacity. Would we at least be able to meet our current requirements? our current requirements or requests that we have once we disludge? Do we have that? Will it give us that capacity or not? Or have we got too many resource consents to what our capacity currently is, even dislodged?
Yeah, I, I think, I think there's two parts to your question there, Louise. The way I, I, I'm hearing it, the, the first part is around, there may already be existing applications that have been lodged through council that may have already been approved and, but yet not yet connected. Now, I understand South Water Rapa have taken the position that they will honour those and those will continue to, to connect. The other part of your, your question, I think then is still around that question of, once that the sludge is done, does that still mean there's opportunity or rigor room for, for, for small amount of connections? Is that, is that kind of what you're asking?
Yeah, I think, I think what I've, sort of my first part is, is kind of that part one was, will South Water Rapa be able to meet? Because right now, they can't, we can't connect at all, even the ones that are promised. So once we disludge, will we at least be able to meet the, our current commitments? So that first part of that question, can we, can everybody that's been agreed to, will they be able to connect once we disludge?
Yeah, I, I am. Yeah, I was, I was gonna just throw it over to Andy. I see he's put his hand up. Do you want to jump in, Andy?
I think the, is it? Save you.
Yeah, sorry. Wellington Water will provide updated advice to South Water Rapa on that after the desludgeing is completed.
I think, I think your point's well made, Amy and, and Adam. Those applications that have already been approved will be, South Water Rapa has confirmed that they will be honoured. I think post-desludgeing, then the monitoring of the effluent and the ponds will inform a future debate around if, if any additional connections can be made. But it won't be wholesale connections. Let's, let's be, you know, just be honest about it. At this point, it'll be, it won't be multiple connections.
Well, we can, we can come back to it if, if we still got lingering questions, I suppose. Because I know we, we're still receiving questions around trying to confirm that, right? Yep. You, you going to jump back in, Andy?
I was, I was just going to just ask the question whether if everyone understood what, what the geo bags were. Was there, is there a common understanding around the geo bag process?
I don't know.
Adam, I'll throw it back to you.
I wonder if, I've got a couple of pictures on a couple of slides. It might help. Oh, look at that. Nope. Picture says a thousand words, doesn't it? Do I hand it over to the, the, the process engineer who might be able to talk us through the process? I do, I do capital delivery projects, so I don't, I don't do wastewater treatment.
Yeah, cool. So when you de-sludge a pond, it's basically like a barge that comes along, gets lifted onto the pond, and it's essentially like, sort of like a vacuum cleaner that comes along and sucks up the sludge, operate it quite carefully not to destroy the bottom clay liner of the pond. So they're sort of sucking sludge off the, the free layer. And then it, so that we can maximise the amount of OpEx that's spent on getting sludge out of the pond, which is, you know, a real critical thing for operate, for the operation of the pond. The most cost effective way is to put it into a geo bag on site. So a geo bag is a geo textile bag essentially that the sludge is pumped into. The solids are retained inside that bag and liquid is pushed out. And it's, the geo bag is located inside a bonded area. So it's inside another plastic lined area. So the leachate, the, the water that comes out of the bag goes into a, a little pump station and it's returned, that liquid is all collected and returned to the front of the plant. The sludge stays inside the geo bag and it can sit there and basically, and it's kind of the best example, it's kind of like composting inside the bag and stabilising and becoming broken down over time and becoming sort of like essentially dirt by the end of, can sit there for five years. I think the life of the bags is guaranteed for 20 years. So it'll, there's some laydown, geo bag laydown areas which have been designed and going through the consent process. And it'll just sit in these, these geo bags for as long as it needs to, until we can decide what to do with it. But the priority is getting sludge out of the ponds and paying OpEx for desludgeing, not, the alternative is obviously transporting it and disposing it in a landfill, which is very hard to find someone that will take it.
Really good explanation. Thanks, Amy. Even good for me.
Cool. Back to the slides.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Have you got those again? Sorry.
Yeah, it's tricky because I put my phone on, my microphone on mute before anyway. Back to the slide. Oh, sorry. Let's go share. Sorry, sorry. There we go.
All right. So I just wanted to, I can't remember if I had this slide in last time as well. But again, just, it's a bit of a, some of the results from the, the sludge survey that we did at, in Martinborough there. So, you know, it gives, gives depths, depths to sludge. Sort of gives a picture of, of where the sludge is sitting within the ponds.
Hmm. I've got a question from Mel there.
Yeah, go on.
Sorry, sorry. I was just asking if we could get some copies of the slides following the meeting. Is that okay?
I think Amy from South Water Rapa will help circulate those. And they'll go online, I think. The idea is they normally get uploaded on the website too, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do you want to go to the next slide now, Adam?
Yes, thank you. And a couple of images from the design drawings for the two laydown areas. So those orange cubes roughly where those geo bags would be positioned at the two sites. So the left is, is the Martinborough site, and on the right is Graytown. So.
Adam, just before you jump on from that, just the community reps that are on this call, just reflecting on the, you know, any worries that you hear from community around that desludgeing process, if at all, are they kind of covered by what Adam said? Or is there anything else that occurs to you of any worries that you've heard passed on or information that people feel they might need to understand what's going on?
So the main thing is that, I guess, because they're reasonably close to the river, people want to ensure that environmentally it's going to be sound and sustainable. And so, yeah, we want it to be a solution to overflows directly into the river and hopefully negate that. So, but it's, it's, people, people don't understand the, the technology, what desludgeing means. And I'm, I mean, I'm learning more about it just through this, through this call. And, but those are the main things that people seem to be worried about. What does it look like? Is it safe practice? And is there no potential if it's left sitting there for however many years for it to leach or impact again in a negative manner?
Yep. So it go, the earthworks school goes through the resource consent process for earthworks. So that's approved by Greater, will be approved by Greater Wellington. Sorry. And it is, geo bags are used as a very common desludgeing mechanism across New Zealand for pond treatment systems. The, the area, the, the requirement is that the geo bag laydown area is lined with an impermeable liner. So nothing can be, no, nothing can get out of that liner area. It's all returned to the front of the treatment plant.
And Aaron, question or comment here?
Yeah, sorry. Just thought it'd be good time to jump in. So yes, as Amy's mentioned, Greater Wellington Regional Council does process the resource consent for the two earthworks consents. And those are looked at by the experts in terms of controlling sediment discharges from the earthwork areas, in terms of the, the actual sludge itself, as Amy's mentioned, where the, the desludgeing itself is covered under a permitted activity rule. So there's no consent for that. What we do is we will be monitoring the activity from both for the odour and for discharges from those areas if there were to be any overflows. And obviously, you know, we have tools in the tool belt for, you know, bringing those into compliance if there were issues. So we will be closely monitoring. And also, you know, obviously Wellington Water will, will be monitoring that as well. So, which we have, we do have confidence in them.
I think it's important to remember there's like approximately up 30% of the pond volume is filled with sludge at the moment. And it's really critical that we get it out of the pond and let the pond have, you know, that space. So it can, that volume to, to treat the effluent, the wastewater better.
Excellent. Thank you. Back to you, Adam.
Yeah, thanks. Just wanted to provide a brief update on these two, two do abatement notices. So again, that first one around the inflow quality monitoring program. So that is ongoing. I'm trying to, is that commence back in April? Trying to think off the top of my head, March. So that's going, going well. Some of the initial results coming or data coming through that is being fed into those future design upgrades that we use for the, for the pump station and irrigation system for that stage two A pain farm. The other piece of work that's been done lately is around the UV investigation. It's looking into how that's operating. Can we improve the way it's operating? So some, some sampling and data analysis has been undertaken. And the team have identified a capital fix around a run to waste to sort of manage, so the, 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 the operation of that, that UV. We, the project, I guess, has identified the fact that once we de-sludge, the, the effluent going through that will, will change. And so we will want to resample that post, post-desludgeing and make sure that that capital fix is still, still appropriate to, to implement in that site. Yep.
And Aaron, a comment from you.
Thanks. Just a question on the run to waste. Could you explain what that is?
Uh, yes. So I'll, I'll do my best. Again, not, not my expertise, but not as I understand, as the, the UV is turned on and as it's heating up, the, the, the UV bulbs within, inside, it takes some time for those UV bulbs to heat up. But there's water that might be or effluent that's running through those. And so for a very short period of time, there may be a slightly non-compliant water that's passing through. So the idea being for that first period as the UV bulbs are heating up to run that back into their ponds until they're operating at, at full, full temperature. Do, can you add to that, Amy, at all?
Sorry, just listening. Yeah, it's exactly what you've explained. And it's a specific function of the, the Martinborough configuration that it does turn on and off in some operating conditions, quite a lot. So that's not great for it. And so we, this run to waste, which means running, discharging the flow that passes through the UV during the startup period back to the pond. It's sort of like, it's an improvement. But I guess what we also need to balance is the, the longer term picture, which is a, a new UV system. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of operational constraints with the UV, that current UV system at the, at the Martinborough site. And it's, yeah, the run, the run to waste is, is just exactly what Adam described. Does that answer your question?
No, that does. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Trying to learn as much as I can about wastewater treatment, even though it's not my, my field. Otherwise.
Oh, sorry. I was trying to say the run to waste thing, the on off thing. It's like, it's a function of them, the operators trying to run, work the, the equipment that they've got more reliably. And it's, it's, yeah, it's just, it's really hard for the guys to run that system, as it is currently.
Thanks, Amy. And I guess also just wanted to have a plug for what's coming up. So we have already reached out to EWE, but we, we would like to continue our engagement with, with EWE and in particular around the Manapenoa Values Monitoring Plan. So we were asking if they would like to develop those, for those two plants that we've got there. The, I already touched on the influent monitoring and sampling program. So that's, that's a 12-month program that we're running. So we've got there through to April 2025. And that will give a really good picture for understanding the influence over a 12-month, 12-month period. Well, it's desludgeing, obviously. We've touched on that before. So working to those, those dates there around desludgeing Martinborough for April and then immediately following for, for, for Graytown is, is the plan there. The UV optimisation works. So we just touched on that just before and that sort of run to waste or run to pond might be a better way of framing it. So immediately after we've done that work, desludgeing at Martinborough, we'll review that optimization works for Martinborough there. Another key piece of work that we're getting underway shortly is the reparium planting at, at Graytown along the Tilsons and Papua I stream. So we'll, we'll be committing that, that shortly. We've got funding this year to, to progress on. And of course, we can't forget, like I said, the other bigger piece of work, the, the medium, medium to long-term work, which is around moving both these plants to that stage two land irrigation. So continuing on with the, the planning and, and design work. And a key piece of that is around securing the funding to do so through South Water Rapa District Council's long-term plan. That work's getting underway shortly. They're planning work on that. Yeah. Any, any questions on some of those activities?
Mel, was that a question? Just on, on mute possibly, Mel?
No, definitely on mute.
Yeah, thank you.
No, I'm, so obviously with the, you've got investigate plan and design stages, is that, that they are happening? Or, or that they haven't, the planning and designing hasn't been done yet? Do we have any idea what step, stages there's going to be around this work and what that might look like?
I guess the, the, a large portion of the focus for the, the, the delivery team has been on, on the abatement notices and addressing those, the immediate need. The, the longer term works has been running in, in parallel. So work has, has commenced, you know, some planning, early planning work around developing what, what the, the plan is to tackle that, those long-term upgrades. So some of these, these early works obviously feed into it. We've already touched on with the influent monitoring. So, so that will feed into the, the planning and therefore the design work required. So yes, that, that work's ongoing. It's just, it's a, it's a multi-year program of, of. It's just, it's a, it's a multi-year program of, of upgrades, right? So, um, we're working to that twenty, sort of a twenty thirty-one deadline. So we, we're going to be busy on these for the next eight, eight years. So the, 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 the big upgrades.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that your last slide there, Adam?
I think it is. I did want to, obviously we'll open it back up for, for questions and clarifications. I, I did want to give a quick plug for a planting day event, which I, I should have included the slide actually. But, um, everyone on this phone, this, this call would be more than welcome to, to attend. But I'll open it to questions and then I'll, I'll give a quick plug.
Maybe you do give us your plug now, Adam, and then we'll go to you, Erin, for I guess input and commentary on both Adam and Amy's kind of broad presentations. And then to, um, I guess Andrew from Southwater Upper District Council. Okay, Adam, thank you.
Yeah, look, um, re- related in a sense that we've, we've been working with the council offices, the Maori Standing Committee in particular, dating back to, to a couple of overflow events that occurred in twenty twenty at, in Martinborough. And there's always been a, a, a plan to do a, like a planting day event, to, 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 to help assist in, in working back towards restoring the Maori of, of the Ruamahanga River. And, um, we had a, a planting day event organized in, in, uh, in autumn. Unfortunately, the, the, the river and things didn't quite play a ball, but we've reorganized and Rory's been working really hard behind the scenes as well for, for a, uh, rescheduling this planting day event. And so that's now planned for this Friday. So it's coming up very quickly all of a sudden. But we will, we will make sure that everyone on the call, um, gets sent out the, the latest. I think we're seeing another final update out tomorrow. So, uh, feel free to, to come along, um, get your hands dirty, plant a few plants. And it's all in the, um, the spirit of, uh, plants that will support, uh, tuna and inanga spawning for, for the lower valley. So we're really excited to, to crack into it on Friday. So.
Um, Mel, comment or question from you?
Sorry, I was just asking if, if there's any, um, I guess communications that we could send out just, you know, really quickly adaptable for Facebook or whatever that, um, the plantings and, and things, everyone's doing them at the moment around Martinborough. So, yeah, people are really engaged with it. And I'd just love to get that message out there so people can plan for it, really. Yeah, it'd be great.
Yeah, no, um, Mel, do you want to, um, send him an email actually on that and we can, yeah, work through that? That's, um, I mean, that, that's, yeah, it, it is the event itself, Adam, I think, be fair to say. We, we're sort of, was more aimed towards working with, um, you know, the, the Maori Standing Committee and, um, and council and a small group of people, uh, there rather than sort of wider community. But, um, you know, definitely keen to drop me an email and we can, we can see what we can do. Anything to add there, Adam, around, so that wider community engagement on it, on the event?
Well, I mean, key in here is the, the, um, Martinborough Community Board, right? Though, though I, I think they should have been extending the invite, but, but, um, yeah, we'll, we'll touch base afterwards, Mel.
Yeah, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Might move to you now, Erin, um, from the regional council's perspective. Comments and commentary, I guess, on both the material covered by Amy and Adam would be really helpful at this stage. And to just share context, I guess, of how this, that was your expectations at the regulator.
Yeah, sure. Um, so, yeah, like, I mean, firstly, I'd probably just like to say thank you to, um, to the community that we've, the community members that we've had here today. I mean, this is really what it's all about. And it's great to see you guys showing up. Um, you know, it really makes for a much more, um, yeah, much more worthwhile meeting. You can see, I think, from the presentation and the, you know, the amount of work that's going on. It's really clear that Southwater Upper District Council and Wellington Water are working very hard. And improving the compliance at the, at both of the plants. There is obviously still, you know, quite a lot of work to be done, just looking, obviously I haven't received the, the annual reports yet, that Joe, at the end of the month. So it's difficult to really provide a lot of, um, comments at this stage. But looking back at the quarterly reports that we've received over the last five months, um, or close to a year now, that the effluent quality is still a challenge at both of the plants. And, um, the desludging is a big step in terms of improving that. So, you know, really looking forward to seeing the results from the desludging and how that, um, how that improves things. And, but again, you know, you can see at Graytown with the increased land discharge over the last summer, just a huge, huge volume gone to land. Um, you know, and it has a really positive impact for the Papawai Stream and the ecology in that stream. So, um, yeah, we're, we're really pleased. I think it's fair to say that, um, you know, things are moving in the right direction. There've, there's been a massive amount of work that's gone in over the last year and, um, you know, it's very pleasing to see. So, you know, I really commend both Southwater Upper District Council and Wellington Water for all of the work that's, that's gone in. And, you know, the funding that's being put forward. I know it's very difficult for the community. Particularly in the current financial kind of, um, economic climate. But, you know, it's really worthwhile and a really important step. So, um, yeah, just want to give my thanks for that. Um, from the regional council's perspective, yeah, you know, compliance is, um, as our, um, main focus. We really just want to see the plants operating within the design parameters and the consents as much as possible. So, um, you know, the work that's going in is basically the, you know, the, the key there. In Martinborough, we have had the abatement notices. They really are just sort of the guide rails in terms of making sure that the work that, was proposed at the start and the, you know, the items that were required were done, they were done within the timeframes that were initially agreed. So that's really all that's about. But you can see that, uh, like we received the final reports for two of the abatement notices on Friday. And looking through the work that's been done, it's, um, it's really comprehensive. And we've been able to confirm that those abatement notice requirements were fulfilled. Um, so, yeah, there's still some reporting obviously to come through with the influence study. There's a basis of design report which is due at the end of the month. There's some outcomes from the UV optimization that probably need, need to be worked through. And, um, and then there was some other reporting that was mentioned. Uh, can't remember exactly what it was called, Amy, but the, um, sort of like a, you know, improvements report that obviously will be quite critical, that it sounds like it's coming quite soon as well. So, yeah, just basically we're still, you know, from, from Greater Wellington's perspective, it's still a work in progress. But, um, you know, everything's really positive and moving in the right direction. Basically, what I really had to say.
Excellent. Any, any questions for, um, Erin from the community in particular? Okay, thank you. Might hear from you, Andrew Finch now, um, on behalf of the district council.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, yeah, it's interesting. I think this is either my week seven or week eight down at the wonderful Southwater Upper. Having come from, uh, well, currently based in Auckland and come from the far north. Lots of observations. It's been a really interesting, uh, period of time for me. And I think probably the first one is just the commitment of the community boards and the public to, and residents to seek improvement and growth and build, build their communities. And the water service is key, clearly fundamental to that. The second one is everything I'm seeing here in Southwater Upper is mirrored in many regional councils across the country. The issue with capacity, the issue with compliance. A lot of councils are, are struggling to get those across the line. And, but one thing I have seen is that your commitment to disposal to land is significantly ahead of a number of other places that I've worked in. So that's a big tick in the box for, for the community. What else have I got here is the other thing I've been really impressed with is the operations team. I spent a reasonable amount of time out with the operators and, I was really struck by the commitment, motivation and passion for what they do. And, um, you know, we owe them, uh, we owe them a big tick in the box for probably a lot of work that is unseen, uncelebrated, but just keeps the, the wheels going on a day-to-day basis. So that's been really positive as well for me. And of course, as we're approaching the new, um, long-term plan, the question of affordability in terms of what we would like to do as to what is affordable for the community. And that's a, a a balancing act that a lot of councils, most councils across the country will be grappling with and have grappled with last year. Certainly Southwater Upper is seeking to look to leverage as much external funding from whatever source it possibly can to help support that process. But it is going to be an interesting debate as we move through the long-term plan process. Apart from that, um, uh, thanks to the Wellington Water team because, um, they do get, um, a few brick backs and, um, but, uh, everyone I've met is committed to moving everything forward and heading in the right direction. And also perhaps a thank to the regulator, Aaron, who, um, is probably one of the most approachable regulators I've come across in a few years. So thank you for that, Aaron.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm making it in my face yet.
But that's probably all I'd like. And, uh, yeah, so that's probably all I need to say at this point, unless James wanted to add anything else. No, cool.
Any questions for Andrew? Okay, thank you. Um, might kind of near bring this meeting to a close. Before we do so, just coming back to you, um, Nick and the Wellington Water team. You have to give a, a brief summary of, I guess, action points identified or, or commitments to things that are, you know, to be followed up on as a kind of closing comment.
Yeah, I think the big one, big one is obviously the commitment, um, that Amy raised to, to producing a study on growth and, and provide to Southwater Upper, uh, District Council by early twenty-five. And obviously this will help enable form decisions about, um, uh, future growth levels. And of course with that is around, um, the, 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 I, I guess of reinforcement that, uh, the desludging, uh, operation, um, is unlikely to address, uh, not yet approved, uh, development. So I think, um, you know, that's, that's a key message that needs to go forward is that, yes, we're, we're doing an operation of desludging, but that, that's, it's not like the, the, you know, the, the, um, the, the golden bullet at the end that's going to fix everything. With that though, uh, three abatement notices for, um, Martinborough Wastewater Treatment Plant, two have been completed. With, um, the third one, obviously, the desludging at Martinborough is, uh, is still on track. One of the key takeaways for me was, uh, that, uh, I was quite interested in was the, the, uh, engagement ongoing around Manuferua Values Monitoring Plan. So that, that's underway and obviously, um, quite a key, key, uh, um, item, uh, going forward. And now that gratuitous plug for Roar, uh, for, for, um, Adam is, is around, um, uh, Rory liaising with Mel around the, the planting and, and, um, that's this Friday. So need to get something out there pretty quickly. That's my key takeaways. Uh, Andrew, I'm not too sure. And, and just also is that we do, uh, uh, another one of these in February. So hopefully, no, no pressure, uh, Amy, um, might align with the, um, steady growth early twenty-five. Or at least an update then, by then as well.
Yeah, um, there's some really good points then, that, that kind of fine point around clarification of, you know, the importance of the desludging operation and yet its overall context of how far it goes. Who will, who will kind of share that message?
Uh, probably, probably we'll, we'll, uh, have those discussions with Andrew, um, uh, going forward. And, and, and obviously, um, ma- make sure you, some sort of united, uh, communication, um, uh, makes it quite fair. That all of this work going on at the moment is, is, is just to address the current issues. Not, um, not addressing any future ones.
Yep. And, and I imagine on the, um, on the website, there would be access for people to follow that actual desludging process and, hopefully find, uh, see information.
Yeah, sorry, Andrew's dropped there. I was just going to say of, um, managing the comms and engagement for the, all the desludging work, uh, you know, alongside some partners. So, um, yeah, so we'll, we, one of the things in there is just being, I guess, having clarity around the role of desludging. And, and that, so that, that will be part of that. Yeah. So public comms, website, that kind of thing.
Brilliant. Excellent. And the only other item I guess is, you know, for the CLG at the moment, on a six monthly cycle, which will be about March next year, does that feel appropriate or does that need to change, you know, either shorter or longer?
Um, I'd, I'd personally like to see a, um, short, shorter period of time, um, and more catch-ups and conversation just while, uh, we're just, and, and until we have some idea of what this is going to look like for the community. It just ensures that the information as we get it, uh, yeah, remains that constant flow, um, coming from you. The more information, the better. Yeah, people are following it. So it's important to know.
And so Mel, by shorter, are you meaning, you know, December type thing or March?
Um, earlier than March, like, um, you know, even if we could, um, look to do something sort of February or, you know, once, once, once people are back in after the, uh,
Okay.
When, when is the, when's the, um, consultate, the, the, uh, getting the contractors for the desludging? Like, when's that timeline meant to sort of finish? Cause like right after that would be a good time to kind of know all this person's been contracted and you're on track that, you know, because the desludging is being watched.
Yeah, um, Louise, I'm, I'm just wondering whether, um, that, you know, for that specific sort of information, right, um, we, we, we can probably update the, the comms information that we've got online already around that. But yeah, I mean, that's sort of the, the next sort of two months sort of outlook, um, one to two months. We should have more certainty on that. So, you know, I can work with, with, with Andy, Andrew, um, around how best to maybe update the website on that perhaps?
And then perhaps meet February as a CLG and check in.
Yeah.
Hmm. Erin, how does that fit with your expectations? You know, this is a kind of requirement as the regulator?
Yeah, like I'm very happy to take the lead of, um, the community members. This is after all what it's all about. I know at the last meeting we had, I don't think we had anyone, uh, show up and there was talks of perhaps even canning the whole thing, but it's great to see people showing up. You know, the more people we get, the more we can, um, you know, add value, really. Because obviously there's probably quite a few high-paid people sitting in this room right now, racking up an hour's worth of billable time. So, um, yeah, we want, we want, not me, not me, I'm not, but, uh, it would be great to, you know, to, to have it at a frequency that makes sense.
This was at the last meeting, Erin, just to, uh, a plug for Louise.
Yep, yeah, excellent. And definitely coming, you know, with these, this big project on next year and even the, um, the other constraints in play at the time that is probably ripe for false assumptions. So as much as people are debating a problem, they're at least debating a real problem, not an imagined one. So, um, you know, the CLG could be extremely important, even if it is pretty brief, a one-hour check-in. Yep. Excellent. Thanks everyone. Um, might bring that to a close. Um, do we have a karakia to finish with either Nick or anyone else on the call?
Hold it. Uh, unahia, unahia, unahia et e uru tapanui, kia watea, kia mama te na ko, te tenana, te warua eti aratakatu, koe ra i romo, fakarerehia, akei kieranga, kia watea, kia watea, ei ra koea watea.
Good. Uh, thank you everyone. Poraparaki metepo. Look to you in February.
Thank you.
Thanks everyone. Thanks, Andrew.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.